My name is Brian Barefoot. I'm running for Indian River County School Board, District 5. And about myself, I was born in Ohio. I grew up there. Went to college in Boston or Wells Lake, Mass. Babson College, got a Bachelor of Science degree in 1966. Went into the Army Reserves for a period of time. It was great when the Vietnam War was sort of at its height. Fortunately for me, I never got activated for that, although I did get activated a couple of years later, which is an interesting story in and of itself. But when I finished with that, I went to work for Merrill Lynch in New York City at their executive training program. Got an MBA at night from Pace University. Spent, actually, when I got activated was for the mail strike. There was a mail strike in New York City. I forget the year, but let's say 1970, '71. And we were activated. And that activation, even though it was only for a few days, took a year off my obligations. So that was the good news. And I learned how to stuff pigeonholes with mail. At any rate, so you know, these skills, you never know when you're going to need them. So I spent 25 years at Merrill Lynch. I, along the way, went to Chicago from New York. I ran their fixed income group in Chicago. I went to Cleveland, ran one of their branches, back to New York to reorganize the firm. Moved to San Francisco, around the West Coast for Merrill Lynch. Came back to New York. And the last 10, 12 years, I was in charge of all of their risks, all the trading areas, institutional sales worldwide. So I traveled around to Tokyo and London and Frankfurt and, you know, the major money centers, because a major financial firm moves their inventory of securities around the world on a 24/7 basis. And so I was responsible for all of that. Retired from Merrill Lynch. Did some real estate development. Took over a closed tenant center, turned it into a 180,000 square foot family play center with three skating rinks, soft play, a fitness center, whatever. But I knew the people from past colleague at Merrill Lynch was the president of Payne Weber. And so I was recruited back into Wall Street. We acquired Kidder Peabody, which is a firm that you may not have heard of, but back in those days, this was 1994. And I ended up running all of their capital markets, investment banking business until we sold the firm to UBS. I then ran a small technology company called NeoVision Hyper Systems. They're world famous for having invented heat maps. If you see these different colored maps for all sorts of different applications. It, it's an interesting technology. But at the same time, I'd been on the board of Babson College since 1985. And in 1996, I became the chairman. And we decided to not renew the contract of the president. And it happened simultaneously when I made the decision to the NeoVision Board that we had to sell the company. This is early 2001. The tech bubble had burst. And so I went off to become the interim president of Babson while selling the company, because I lived in that world of mergers and acquisitions. And they backfilled until I was able to sell the company. And I agreed to go to Babson for no more than six months, till the end of the year. This would have been 2001. We had our house on the market in New Jersey. We had built a home in Vermont. And we were going to just go to Vermont in Vero Beach. And so we're in the process, or the search committee's in the process, and 9/11 happens. And that changed the world, particularly in Boston and on the East Coast. Again, to make a long story short, I ended up staying for seven years. Because interim, of course, I say we're all interim. If you don't do the job, you're interim. If you're doing the job, you can probably hang around as long as you want. And it was an interesting seven years. I knew the college very well, having been an alum, having been on the board, having been chair. Babson was known, and still is known, as the top-ranked entrepreneur school in the world. But we had our challenges. The finances got beat up pretty good. The endowment got hit. We have an exec ed business that was 50% international. And the terrorists flew out of Boston. We lost alumni. We lost parents of students. It was a very emotional time. A little different now, but it was a transaction. It was a sort of a point in time, and then you had to recover for it. It's not ongoing, but the current situation, you know, has created this kind of uncertainty. Seven great years. Retired from Babson. But along the way, I've sat on a number of boards. They're really too numerous to name. But most significant would be, I was the finance chair for Blue Cross Blue Shields, a $16 billion company, and audit chair for 11 years. Co-founded a couple of small companies. A solar energy company in Boston that we just sold this past December, about a year ago. And, but I get to Vero Beach. I ended up being mayor of Indian River Shores. Did that for five years. Whether you liked it or not, I was the guy that basically sued the city of Vero Beach to get out of the electric business. And it was a long, protracted negotiation of many, took many twists and turns. But at the end of the day, I think nothing has benefited this community more than getting the city out of that business, even though there were certain people that fought like crazy to keep it. Just as an example, last year alone, Cleveland Clinic's electric bill was $700,000 less than it would have been had they had the city electric. And FPL is in a much better position to protect the community in hurricane season and all of that. So, and I've been on the, I was on the board of the hospital. And then Cleveland Clinic comes along. I'm one of the vice chairs of the foundation. And as most people know, we've raised over the last 10, 11 years, well over $100 million for the community. I was, when I retired here in 2008, '09, I was asked to go on the board of St. Edward's School. I do know how to restructure businesses. And if you think about it, education is a business. The metrics are different, but it's a business. It's like the school district's a $300 million business. And I was part of the board. And the three or four guys that did most of the heavy lifting that restructured the balance sheet of St. Ed's. I was chair of the advancement committee, which is marketing and fundraising and all that stuff. And then I, my term limit was out. And now I'm just busy with the hospital here. And I'm on a bank board in Boston. I chair the investment committee for Blue Cross. It's a $6 billion fund. There's probably a couple of other things. I mean, a couple advisory boards. One here to VOCAP, which is a private equity fund. There's another one in the Boston area. Still involved with Babson, helping the president get through this period. Along the way, besides St. Ed's, I served for nine years on the board and was treasurer of the board of Kent Place School, which is an all-girls K through 12 school in Summit, New Jersey. So if you think about it, and I've been around education forever. 23 years at Babson in every potential capacity. Simple board member, chairman of a committee, board chair, president of the college. Seven years at St. Ed's. I'm still on the board of trustees of a public high school in Vermont. Where on a smaller scale, the demographics are very similar to Indian River County. A lot of wealth here, a lot of poverty there. And we've put in place some really interesting programs, which I've talked to David Moore about, potentially being put in place here. And so that's my story.
Hi, my name's Isaac. I'm, I'm starting second grade. Why do you want to hold this office?
Well, I think first of all, boards are interesting animals in and of themselves. And I think good boards are comprised of people that are different. Different backgrounds, different functional skills. And I think I bring a dimension, given my whole portfolio of life experiences. And I've been very fortunate. That will, that's very different than they've had on that board for some time, at least as far as I know. As far as specifically related to education, as I said earlier, I was on the board of an independent all-girls school from K through 12 for a long time. St. Ed's here in Vero Beach. I helped them, you know, restructure the school coming out of the financial crisis in 2008, '09. And president of, in effect, CEO of a major college in a highly competitive market like Boston with a, had a global reputation. Traveled the world, both from a professional standpoint and then as a college president. And I think at the end of the day, I've got demonstrated leadership ability in both the private sector, the not-for-profit sector, as well as the educational sector. And I always believe that everything begins and ends with leadership. You don't have it, you take it for granted until you don't have it. And then all of a sudden, you say, well, you know, it's really important. So I think that my, besides my credentials and all the jobs I've held and the volunteers, just my accomplishments and people having confidence. Leaders are elected, they're not appointed. Managers and administrators are appointed. Leaders are elected. And I think I wouldn't have been the mayor, I wouldn't have been the chair of a major committee of a major company if I didn't, if the people around me didn't feel that I had the leadership skills in order to move the organization forward. And I think I can really bring that to the school board.
What do you hope to accomplish?
Well, if I could be so bold, I would change the word "challenges" to "opportunities." Every challenge presents an opportunity. Somebody's misfortune is somebody else's opportunity. There's some obvious challenges. And the first thing I would point out is that there's this achievement gap. It's referred to the African-American achievement gap. I would argue that it's an achievement gap, irregardless of African-American. There, the socioeconomic diversity of the community, which suggests that whether you're African-American, Hispanic, or white, there are kids growing up in circumstances that just by the way they're growing up, put them at a disadvantage. And COVID has only increased that disadvantage. And you think about how education has had to be delivered over the last few months. I grew up, we created an online MBA program when I was at Babson. I understand the technology, we use it all the time. Now, of course, with Zoom, it's, and WebEx, and there's BlueJeans. There's more of these platforms you can ever imagine. And it seems every board that I'm on uses a different one. So I can't remember my password number. But at any rate, my password. But I think this achievement gap is a major issue. It was before, it's even greater now. We don't know what's going to happen in the fall. I know that everybody is hopeful that schools can open. But when they do, it's going to be different. I think the other opportunity, challenge opportunity, is all of a sudden, X number of teachers were put in a position that they had to teach kids online. They can't take attendance, they don't see the kids, they don't know where the kids are paying attention. If you come from a hole's hole, you may not even have had laptops, let alone internet. Yes, the district did a wonderful job of getting roughly 1,000 laptops out there. They put hotspots out around. But there's no substitute for being in a classroom with a teacher who's used to teaching face-to-face dynamics. So how does this evolve over the next year or more? And we may be forced to enter into a new model where part of what you learn is online. I mean, if you come back to school in the fall, and you've got to be, you can only come in the morning, the other half come in the afternoon. Or you come every other day. Or it's Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Tuesday, Thursday, all of the various options. This is going to be a challenge. And I think the opportunity is, one, teachers are going to have to, and they're all dedicated, so they'll make, but they're going to need some help and training, are going to have to learn how to be more comfortable. Parents are adapting. I mean, you can only imagine, you're out of work and you've got two or three kids at home. It's got to be, I have a daughter and her husband are both doctors in Boston. I mean, they've been in the middle of this, in a hotspot. They have three kids. The 15-year-old's in charge. Now fortunately, between a neighbor and the 15-year-old, and they're good kids. But it was a struggle. And they're very comfortable with technology. And technology's a tool, it's not the end-all. If you don't know how to use the tool, then you're going to have a hard time learning. So I think this is both an opportunity and it's going to be a challenge. And it leads into, you know, health issues and all of the other sidebars, which are maybe as important, if not more important, than the actual in-the-classroom learning part. So that's challenge number one. Opportunity number one. And I think the, what you hope is accomplished is one, that besides initiatives that Dr. Moore has begun, it's only going to be challenged even more, that what you hope to accomplish is that you do close the gap. You're never going to get to 100% of where you got, but that's part of the vision. You know, visions are, you need them, but a lot, most visions are never achieved. But if you don't have a vision, you're not going to make the kind of progress that's required to get whatever it is you want to get. And in a world where everything's changing constantly, particularly where technology's involved, it's a challenge. And, but it's a great opportunity. And it provides wonderful opportunities for teachers and professional educators to grow. And I think, given my background, you know, I don't have the answers. I can ask questions, but I can certainly support whether it's just, this is a good idea, or whether you fight for the funding necessary to implement something that will result in this achievement gap being narrowed. So that's number one. Number two is just finances. What's going, and I have obviously a lot of background in finances. And there's not too many balance sheets and income statements that, chairing, I mean, I chaired the audit committee for the hospital foundation until Cleveland Clinic took it over. So that's pretty easy for me. The thing I worry about, and everyone should worry about, and I know Dr. Moore's worrying about it, is the funding you're going to get from the state. The state to date is, and I was at a meeting, a lunch, with Dr. Massey down at Indian River State College about two, three weeks ago. And we were talking about this. And he felt that the state deficit this year could be $1 billion. Now, it's not necessarily going to affect this year, because this year's budget, I mean, there's going to be pressure. You wait till the '21, '22 budget. So we've got a $300 million business, as I said earlier. Like every business over a period of time, unnecessary, nice to have, but not necessary to have, things creep into a budget. You have to identify what those are, and you've got to eliminate them. Whenever you start eliminating something, there are people connected with those initiatives. They're going to push back, because you're talking about what they do, what they're passionate about. And it may be outdated, it may be irrelevant. Or we need to invest more in training. We need to invest more in technology platforms to deliver more content online, maybe to the older kids, maybe to the younger kids, and let the older kids use up the classroom space, even in elementary schools. And these are all options, and we don't know the answer. But what you have, the money you have to pay for things is really important. So I think in particular, my background is such that for all of the skills and qualifications the current school board has, they don't have the kind of background. And I think I could really be helpful to the district, to Dr. Moore, to the new CFO, and my colleagues, assuming I'm elected on the board. And hopefully, they trust my point of view on financial matters, just like I would expect to trust their point of view on what's going on in the schools, because I'm not in the schools. I don't have kids in the schools. I have kids in other schools. Challenges are not any different here when it comes to learning and the environment than they are in Boston or New York City, where my son and his family live. So those are the two big things, I think. I think Dr. Moore, when you, when you change culture, and that's why he was hired, there's going to be pushback. And he's going to need support. And he's not always going to be right. Any more than any of us are always right. You know, never in doubt, but not always right. And I think I'm in a position with the life experiences I've had, which are more, I'm older, so it stands to reason. I think I can be a good sounding board, in some respects, a mentor, and certainly be helpful in helping him think through decisions when it comes to, how do we fund what's really important? And along the same lines, he's got a strategic plan. It hasn't been approved yet. I've been through too many strategic planning exercises at every kind of board or business that I've been involved with. You spend a lot of time on a strategic plan. Everybody gets excited, because if it's a good plan, you bring in all of the constituents that are going to be impacted by your plan. And let me tell you, education's got more constituents. Every parent, every student, you know, every teacher, every staff member, governance, the state. I mean, it's, it's a challenge. The process, in fact, is more important than the decision itself. Without a good process, no one will, no one will support the decision to the extent needed to have it be successfully implemented. So the strategic plan is critical. But also critical is, can we afford it? And this is where you bring together the financial piece with the planning and forward-thinking piece. And good strategic plans, the out-years change every year. You're going to have a three-year plan. Anything more than that, you're wasting your time, because the world's changing too fast. But after every year, you've assessed your plan, and you're going to adjust the out-years. And one of the big drivers of adjustment's going to be your finances. What can I afford to do? And you know what, this is, this is something that's important, but it's not as important as this. You're going to have to make trade-offs, and that's not easy. And you're going to disappoint certain constituents when you're making these trade-offs. And I just think my experience, I mean, it speaks for itself. The voters are going to have to decide whether it's relevant or not. Obviously, I happen to think it is, so I wouldn't be wasting my time. And I think Dr. Moore's a real winner. I mean, I was fortunate enough to speak with him over the summer at the urging of the Learning Alliance folks, who are focused on early literacy, and just to get him to apply. And Ray Oguthorpe and his people felt that I could be helpful in talking to him, because I do understand education and some of the challenges. And, and then, of course, he was, did apply, and he was a finalist. And I sat through all the interviews, and I could not have more pleased. And I would compliment the five members of the school board for making what I thought was the right choice amongst three pretty qualified, pretty qualified candidates, any of which could have done a good job. But I thought Moore is the kind of person, that he was innovative. He's a risk taker, in the sense that he's willing to try things. He's, he's not afraid to be fail, because part of success includes failure. And I want to be there to support him. And so that's my story.
What do you think the school district should do to provide for students' safety?
That's, that's at least a two- or three-part question. Depends how you define safety. So let's start with part one. And that's avoiding Margaret Stoneham Douglas-type of situation. A shooter gets into the school looking to raise havoc, cause harm. I think, based on what I've learned from paying attention, I think the district has got a very good plan. There's 27 schools. There's an armed, uniformed officer in all 27 schools. That's a million-dollar commitment there alone. But it's split between the school district and the Vero Beach Sebastian Sheriff's Office. These officers are trained. They go through a drill every month, once a month. I think it's, they've rimmed the, every school's got a fence rim around it now. There's a single entrance. People are buzzed in. And I think what's really good, particularly with all these protests and everything else, the same policeman goes to every school. The kids get to know the policeman. The policemen get to know the kids. There's a camaraderie, there's a respect, there's a understanding of the role of the policeman. And with what's going on on television in other cities around the country, I think that the police in this kind of situation, they become even more important and have the real opportunity to become a role model. Not someone to fear, but someone to obviously respect, but also to sort of be quote-unquote "friends with", just like your mom or your dad, because they're moms and dads. So I'm pretty confident that the plan that's evolved over the last few years, and I give, again, give credit to, I guess, Dr. Rendell and the current school board. Because, you know, there was some pushback, I understand. It was, it's expensive. But how much more treasured can anybody be than your kids? So whatever it took is what they did. So I, I think that covers that part of it. The next thing is health. And let's talk about traditional health, and then let's talk about the overlay of COVID. Mental health is an issue. And what the district has done is, I guess, there's now, and I might be a little off on the numbers. There are four clinicians. And there's an organizer, a supervisor. And they rotate between the schools. And I presume they go where they're needed. But there's a plan afoot, I'm told, and hopefully the funding's there for it, to put a mental health person, or a counselor, call them, in all 27 schools. And they're there to, it's not just for the kids, it's for the staff, it's for the teachers. I think mental health is going to be a bigger problem coming out of this. And you read about it, and you can only imagine what's going on in some homes. Child abuse. When they come to school every day, you know when something's wrong. When they're stuck at home, you don't know what the interaction is between the parent and the child, or the two parents themselves, ultimately the child. They're not getting fed, in some instances, the way they would if they were coming to school, although I think the district has done a really good job of trying to get food out to these families. And again, we're talking about a certain socioeconomic problem. A lot of the problems, and therefore opportunities, that we're seeing on the streets today, this is the core, this is at the core of it. So I think that we can expect some kids coming back to school that are, maybe have had a tough, tough go of it. Maybe some of the teachers that are also parents. And trying to teach online in an environment that they're not comfortable with, they're going to be stressed. Particularly if there's, if they come back to a hybrid situation. Or some of the kids they teach online, or we have an off-and-on. We start in the classroom, and all of a sudden, we've got to shut it down again. This is, this is going to create, it is creating a lot of stress for people. And so I think this mental health piece, trying to anticipate it, having staffing, having a plan or some options, and be prepared. You're never going to anticipate everything, but I think that this is really, now, I'm not elected. And I'm going to have no say over the budget. And I'm going to have no vote about anything, because if I'm successful, I won't get in there until November. But if I'm elected in August, I guarantee you, they're going to hear from me in that district. I can't talk then, because of Sunshine Law, is with whoever is, the current board that's continuing, plus whoever wins District 3. But I can certainly talk to the staff, and I can talk to Dr. Moore, and make sure that whatever I can do is yet an unelected official or sworn-in official, to make sure this aspect of it. And that just spills over to COVID, because I think uncertainty is worth the knowing. When you don't know what's coming next, and your worst fears take over. And if you, if you're in a difficult financial situation, because you've been furloughed, lost your job, your family, particularly if you're an older kid. You know, if you're a seven- or eight-year-old, you maybe don't notice it. But if you're in high school, you notice it. You know that there's stress at home, and it's financially related. And it's all related to this COVID stuff, which has caused tremendous dislocation. I think that this is all part of the same mental health picture. And we have to be prepared for it because it's going to be there. And we need, hopefully, we have trained professionals that can recognize it and anticipate it before it shows up in an unfortunate situation that takes place in a school where somebody's injured, or somebody gets hurt, or, you know, somebody has a heart attack or a stroke because they're so anxious that they just, you know. So all I can do is make sure this is a priority. I hopefully can help make sure there's sufficient funding to make sure that these kids are, you know, looked after, teachers and staff are looked after, and hope that we can get through this period of time. When we come out the other end, there's going to be some casualties, it's inevitable. Hopefully not deaths, but other than from the virus. At any rate, you know, this, as I was saying, this achievement gap, and you tend to talk about in academic or educational terms, but it also shows up in healthcare. And you know, this is a little off your question, but think about this. We live in a very divided country now. You've got black, you've got white, you've got Democrats, you've got Republicans, you've got men, you've got women, you've got gay people, you've got... And instead of finding ways to work together, everybody seems to be at one extreme or the other. I use the analogy, football used to be played, is played between the 35-yard lines. Sometimes you're on this side of the 50, other times you're on that side. Politics used to be the same way. It's not that way anymore. Everybody's inside the 10-yard line and never do they meet. And I think, I think what's happened, it's pointed out, this divisiveness, this COVID has just made the wounds even more obvious. And people that come from lesser means, it's not just education, it's healthcare, it's their health. They can't afford to go to the doctor. And then we tell them they can't go for some period of time unless it's an emergency. Well, you know, someone who thinks they have cancer, or someone who's got heart arrhythmia, they can't go to the doctor because it's considered non-essential? This is what happens when politicians take over and not common sense. I've always wanted to start a political party called the Pragmatist Party. Just a little common sense, please. And Democrats have some common sense and Republicans have some common sense. But this world that we live in of education and kids and healthcare, it's nonpartisan. And it ought to be, unfortunately, it's not. Everything sort of defaults to the lowest common denominator.